Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 11th, 2025 School Committee Regular Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The first item on our agenda is a new item for us. This is act of kindness recognitions, and we have two students to be recognized for that. Dr. Baye, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, the public, and our guests that are here this evening. There's nothing better than recognizing students for just really being standout kids who are doing good things for their community because they want to, not because they feel that they have to. And I think tonight, we have two of these stories. And so I'd like to read a little bit about the incredible generous donation from a Wilkins 3rd grade student, who I actually happened to meet when I was playing a teaching assistant a few weeks ago, or a few months ago now. About a week after the Student Council began the fundraiser, Mateus Ramos, a student in Mrs. Bond's class, came up to Mrs. Bond's first thing in the morning with a heavy bag filled with bills and coins. He told Ms. B that he and his mother went around to friends and family at home and asked them to donate. He collected more than $106. Mateus pictured below said he felt proud after making the donation, and that he felt like they wanted to help because not everyone is fortunate enough to have what he has. You cannot teach that, folks. That's something that's there. So, we would like to recognize him this evening with a certificate of kindness, signed by me on behalf of Stoughton Public Schools, and our best water bottle that we have, a good one, a really good one. So, let's have you come up and take a little picture with us.
Do you want us to see your job?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to say how proud all of us at the Wilkins School are of you and your decision to do this for the community in California who suffered from the wildfires. Mateus is an outstanding student and a role model all of the time, and this is just part of the kind of character that he is. So, I have to say, I'm not surprised that he made this decision, but I'm so happy that he's being recognized. Thank you.
And I'd like to give you a hand.
Yes. Can you translate a little bit? Can you translate a little bit?
Sure. Vocês falam português ou espanhol?
Português.
Ah, sou português. Então eu vou traduzir um pouco se vocês quiserem. So, o Mateus, como você sabe, platou em casas $106, que caiu às escolas para ajudar, o que dava para só em Califórnia, para vocês saber. Ele hoje está recebendo aqui da escola só um consciamento do que ele fez. Uma coisa que ele fez porque quis fazer, não uma coisa que não sabe foi feito para ele. Ele quis fazer, e então a gente temos um prazer de dar este small prêmio para ele ter e ver a sua água quando está na escola. Ele talvez pode jogar uma coisinha de futebol também, que ele é portinho. He's strong, right? Congratulations, buddy. Congratulations. How about you? How about you? You, too?
Nada.
All right. Our second recipient is from the DAW school to support the food pantry. The DAW school 4th grader Connor Isabel continued the tradition of using the 100th Day of School as a way to make a difference in the community. He challenged his fellow students at the DAW to gather as many non-perishable food items to be donated to their food pantry in Stoughton. The goal is for each grade, kindergarten through grade 5, to contribute at least 100 items. The DAW community responded, and Connor surpassed his goal, collecting more than 700 items for the food pantry. The idea for the 100th Day of School food drive came from Connor's older sister Savannah, who organized this challenge when she was at the DAW. Now that she is in middle school, Connor has taken over this effort. Connor is in this picture here with his parents, Mr. Cancelary, and I ended up getting there late, but I did get to see him right after he had done that. So, we are also recognizing Connor this evening for an act of kindness on behalf of Stoughton Public Schools, signed by the superintendent, dated today, March 11th. Congratulations, Connor.
Yes.
Of course.
I just want to say congratulations to Connor. He's a perfect representation of what it means to be a DAW dragon with his community service. He's also a great representation of an amazing family that he comes from, so thank you to all the Isabel family members. This is a tradition we plan on carrying on next year, and Connor will actually be interviewing 1st and 2nd graders when he moves on to middle school to see who can carry on the tradition. So, way to go, Connor. We're all very proud of you.
I'll just finish by simply thanking the families. It takes a village, we know that, and as superintendent, I know that when I'm able to provide support, our principals seeing students doing great stuff along with our teachers, there's nothing easier to support, nothing easier to do that except take the time to recognize them. So, thank you to the families, and thank you to the students for being kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the families again, and thanks to our students. We really appreciate it. We enjoyed having you. All right, just give us a moment while we have a changing the guard. All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone here for public comment? Nope. All right, moving on. We're going to go to our student advisory representative. We have Angie Berry here. Angie, what update do you have for us?
Okay, so we're approaching spring, so the spring sports season is starting next week. We ended the winter season with sports awards night last night, where all the winter teams were recognized. So, that's what I have for athletics. With Student Council, there's a group of seniors. There's 12 seniors who went on a state-to-state conference last week. It was a three-day conference in Hyannis. They were with the State Organization of MASC, so the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, and I was able to sit down and talk with them, or listen to them, and they were pretty inspired by what they did because we weren't able to go last year due to the, we had, we were in a transition year with advisors, so our new advisor, Mr. Bab, was able to take us last week. They were really inspired by everything they heard. They learned a lot from guest speakers, and they learned a lot about leadership, and just about what Student Council is as a whole. So, they were able to network with a lot of other schools and organizations. So, we look forward to going back next year, and also to the Spring Regional Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Conference in April. So, they did that. The senior class is running March Madness Basketball Tournament on Thursday, which is really exciting. We've been doing that since we were freshmen, so it's very full circle. And then we have the Night of Excellence tomorrow night for the whole school.
Great, thank you very much. It's very busy over there at the high school. Any questions or comments for our representative?
I just had one comment. How was the wrestling season? Might as well give me some news because I took Saturday to come and see you, so I want to hear some more news. How'd it go?
It was good. I ended up taking 2nd in the state, so.
Woo! There you go. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yep, so it was a pretty nice ending, my senior season, my career. Yeah, we had Jack Allen take 5th at sectionals as well, so that was pretty cool for him.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That's exciting. Thank you. All right, moving on to superintendent update. Dr. Baye?
Yeah, I'll be brief. You have a number of memos in your packet that you received ahead of time. This is going to be something we're going to start to do more and more often, so that you have information coming out of the HR office, and things that we think are making us trying to get out there in the hiring process, but also providing some of our employees a context of other stuff that's out there. For example, the paraprofessional at William James College, which is actually listed right on their public relations. You have the DOR financials that I got from a most recent report. Again, this is a report of information for your record. The MSBA update letter, which is a process letter really, is there. I had asked Dr. Quahly to give us some data reports on progress and opportunities, and I want to congratulate the district really for some significant improvements. There's still a couple of hiccup areas, but some real significant improvements that have taken place in student outcomes in that area, with things like being above the state average in categories now for literally three years in a row, and then seeing growths, including some of our elementary schools at 71, and 63, and 82% of students making progress. It's a pretty significant number, continuing the growth of that student population within the district. I provided you a sample food services survey for parents and students. Mr. Armando, it's almost probably 10 months late, but it's happening. We're collecting that data. I believe the collection just is ending. Shelter update, we now know that both the Sinesta and the Hampton Inn will be closing. The Sinesta will close as of a meeting this week, by June 30th. Therefore, those students will no longer be enrolled in Stoughton Public Schools, and we have a commitment that the Hampton Inn will be closed by mid-August. Therefore, those students, unless they're living in town somewhere else, would not be enrolled with us. I do think going forward, we have a couple of discussions we need to take that I've mentioned to the chair and the vice chair. We need to talk about the process of McKinney-Vento, and how that happens with the town, and how those funds are allocated. And then lastly, this week, we have our second learning walk district-wide, all schools taking place. I think one is actually taking place tomorrow, and another, and then all of them are taking place on the 13th, and we'll begin to give you some data once we collect a third set of data, and we have some better data outlines for you. And that is the superintendent's update. Madam Chair?
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Armando?
I have a general question, and, sorry. General question, and if it can be given to the public. I'm just curious. I've never asked you this before. What's your biggest worry at this point?
In anything?
In anything related to school.
I think the unknowns coming out of DC are a concern because it changes every day. This afternoon, we have 50% of the Department of Education, USDOE, being laid off, or fired, or whatever the word is that we're using. So, what impact does that have? University of Maine Department of Agriculture just stopped providing them some major research and monies. They don't know if they're going to lose that money. So, it's happening. The question then becomes, how does it happen? The scenario looks like block grants, which means the money goes back to the states. That's great in some ways, but then the state decides how to expend it. So, that creates some hiccups. So, that's the concern. I'm not a person who really worries. As you know, I worry more about other things than I am things I can't control, but it's a little worrisome that if we go from being here and all of a sudden we're on this side of the pendulum, that's a pretty significant strain that it can place on public education, which might be the intent. That's what I worry about.
Yeah, thanks.
Lindsay?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Dr. Baye, we have the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, I was curious if you'd received any information about the information being presented there from the municipal departments or anything?
No, my biggest questions right now are just getting a line item of free cash and getting a line item of the shared costs because I just don't have it. So, as soon as I get it, of course, I'll share it with you. So, and our presentation tomorrow night is a lot of providing information and then taking questions, and then also potentially taking other questions that we have to address afterwards.
Okay.
Because we don't have the answer to them.
Yeah, I think I would be surprised to see any changes in joint costs because the chair of the select board and I had met in December and agreed that we wouldn't make changes for FY '26 in this budget process, but it would be something to revisit this spring, so like around now probably, but for next year. So, I would expect hopefully that.
Yeah, and I'll make sure that I ask those questions.
That would be consistent.
On behalf of the committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Karen?
I had a question about the, well, related to the USDA funding issue to school lunches, but I think it's still so unknown at this point how that's going to affect our free lunch.
Yeah, so remember that we have a $160-plus million line item in the state budget that is part of this process for us. So, we're in Massachusetts in better shape than maybe a few other states, but we don't know what the impact. I will say that the service delivery model is one of my biggest worries. Like, who do we call to get an answer if there's a problem that needs to take place, if in fact, X number of people aren't no longer there? And I'm not making a judgment on who should be there or not. I can't get into that. That's not my role. But what's that impact? And right now, it seems that those situations are changing on a day-to-day situation, and we won't directly feel something until we actually know what it means to us. You know, so I'm thinking about not only the food services, but I'm thinking about Title I down the line. Impact this year would be probably none, minimal. But down the line, what does it mean? Special education and all of that stuff.
Anything else, Karen? Okay. All right, we'll move on to new business. We have some out-of-state field trip requests. The first is for OMS. They would like to go to, the grade 8 band and chorus would like to go to Kenobi Lake Park in New Hampshire, well, I mean, Canobie, sorry. You can even tell I don't. I have not been there.
You have been to Kenobi.
So, in New Hampshire, following their musical festival, they do this every year, and you would think I would know how to say it. They do this every year.
So, we don't make the same mistake.
Any questions or comments about this?
Madam Chair, this is a continuing year-after-year field trip that takes place.
Right, exactly. Yes. I think at one point, we'd actually talked about if there's a way we could like pre-approve this. This is a standard thing, so.
And you can.
Something we can think about.
So, historically, until recently, if you chose to approve an out-of-state field trip, it would consider to be approved unless there's a change to the trip moving forward. So, if you approved like the DC trip for the middle school, we just assume that it to be approved every year unless something came up or we changed the trip. So, that would be an option for you moving forward.
Okay. I don't know if that's an option for today because we haven't discussed it in that sense. Right now, we're just looking out for this year, but thinking about in the future, maybe doing that where we pre-approve, or once we've approved, it's an approved trip. But, so this is for the grade 8 band and chorus for this year. Do I have a motion to approve this field trip?
Motion to approve the 8th grade band and chorus field trip to Kenobi Lake Park.
All right, so that motion was made by Lindsay. A second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Armando. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's carried 4-0. Thank you. And then, we also have a field trip from the South Elementary School. The kindergarten is going to the Providence Children's Museum in Rhode Island. Any questions about this field trip?
I'd like to add that we are adding the Gibbons School to this field trip as well. That just came in, and it's timely, so that's why you didn't get it on Friday.
All right, so it's the South Elementary School and the Gibbons.
If you could take a vote, as one vote, please. Thank you.
Yes.
Just a simple question. Why the Providence Museum? Isn't that the Boston one?
That's, I don't know, do we have Mr. Door?
I think it's just a transportation issue. It takes about 75 to 90 minutes to get into the Seaboard area, while it's taken about 40 minutes to get to Providence, similar type of museum, more time there, more time on learning. So, I think we're opting for that, especially for the kindergarten kiddos. That's the South's perspective, so.
Very good.
All right. I've been to this museum with my kids, and I love it. It's fantastic. I mean, the Boston Children's Museum is great, but this one is a terrific museum. I think they're going to have a great time. I was so upset when my kids outgrew it. So, do I have a motion to approve this trip to the Providence Children's Museum for both the South and the Gibbons?
So moved.
All right, that was made by Lindsay. A second?
Second.
All right, I'll give it to Karen because she hasn't had a second.
Start taking it personally.
I know. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that's carried 4-0. So, that is done with new business. And now we move on to unfinished business, to the South Elementary School Building Needs Update. And I've invited Wilkins Principal Kathleen Monahan and South Principal Jake Door to highlight the education plan's priorities for the new elementary school. We've talked a lot, and there's been a lot of chatter about the condition of the South school, the cost of the project, all these other details. They're all very important, but I don't want the education part to get lost in this. And so, we have, our principals have kind of presented the highlights, so I'm going to turn it over to them. Oh, yeah, we have the slides behind. Yes.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for inviting both Principal Monahan and myself to present on the educational program that we wrote for the new elementary school project. We were asked by the former superintendent, we've been doing this now for a couple of years, and talking about this program. So, to be the person's responsible for involving all appropriate and pertinent stakeholders in providing, analyzing, and interpreting the needs of the buildings and student populations, to accurately provide the plan that would be used by the district's hired architectural firm, Drummy, Roseanne, and Anderson, to create the incredible blueprint we have for a school here. It's important that we highlight that the following plan was derived out of identified needs from students, teachers, administration, parents, and community members. The roughly 80-page document was then carefully written in detail to provide for all of the needs of our students while also abiding by the expectations of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And we're going to take you through the top 10 reasons why we feel are the priorities for this building. So, we did provide some just pictures of the building. So, the first priority was the community spaces. So, the gym and the cafeteria have a dedicated entry separate from the rest of the school, and the rest of the school can be locked with limited public access during non-school hours. This is a function that none of the building currently have at the elementary level. This would be utilized for sports tournaments, community events, and it's a separate learning space from community spaces on nights and weekends. So, really just defined spaces, having that community element in a building that's not currently available to the elementary ages.
The next part of the education plan that was really important to the stakeholders that helped write it was this idea of having a centralized learning commons at the heart of the school. It was thought that we would benefit from having an area large enough to have multi-grade educational opportunities, as well as opportunities for an entire grade to go and learn together. And right now, we don't have any spaces large enough in our existing schools to support that.
So, one of the biggest things that we heard about was having this communities where learning would take place. So, the idea was this building would have three floors with two grade-level communities per floor, and that each of them, on each floor, that community would be clustered together, and that all the student support services would exist within that area for students. They would be there throughout the entirety of the day.
Collaboration spaces was also something that came up over and over again when we met with not only the community members, but with staff and also with students. Right now, it's very challenging to find a spot to pull a small group, or even for groups of students to work together themselves, not in an intervention-type setting. So, offering spaces that would allow for this to happen in a new building is extremely important.
One of the pieces of feedback that everyone really wanted was this idea of 21st century steam lab, and having the opportunity to have a dedicated space for science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. So, having this opportunity for students through, from grades K to 5.
And obviously, safety is something that continues to be a priority in all of our buildings, and this was definitely something that was at the forefront of our conversations when talking about the educational plan for the new building. So, some things like double-entry vestibules, reinforced glass, up-to-date alarm systems, and automatic locking mechanisms are key components of a new building. Outdoor learning spaces also is something that we wanted to make sure we took advantage of, given especially how awesome the property is. There will be multiple, or our hope is that there'll be multiple playgrounds to accommodate the different developmental ages of the students, as well as gathering places outside for learning that could happen when the weather is nice outside of the building.
Additionally, we also talked about the South side of town does not have any actual outdoor spaces for kids, so this would actually provide a need for the community as well. Green spaces and sustainability were the next kind of big item. So, I think the whole idea was the building being utilized as an environmentally friendly space. So, having a rooftop sustainable space where the water is actually like filtering through that rooftop system, having exposed and labeled piping. And so, at first, we kind of both were like, why would you use that? But it's actually a learning opportunity, like this is where the water's coming in. So, really having purpose for that space and having purpose for those items. And then sustainability, I know this was really important to the MSBA in particular, and should be important to the town as well, is being able to be a lead silver at a minimum building, and really utilizing the resources around us to be environmentally friendly and cost-effective.
And much like the collaboration spaces that I spoke about earlier, it was also extremely important that we made sure that we had differentiated spaces for all the different populations that we serve in school. So, we wanted to make sure that we had special education classrooms at each level for each grade-level band, as well as education, English-language education spaces for our EL learners, and making sure that there were spaces for not just one place in the building, which we currently have, but places for kindergarten, 1st grade, 2nd and 3rd grade, and then 4th and 5th grade.
And finally, educator spaces. This is something we've been hearing from the educators in district, at least for the four years that I've been here, and for much longer from Ms. Monahan, sorry. But you've been here longer than me. So, and this is just having those appropriate spaces and not like shoving everyone into a classroom. I mean, at the South alone, and same with the Wilkins, we don't have spaces that are appropriate currently for staff to do PD, to have faculty meetings, to have community events. There's just, the spaces don't currently exist. So, this would allow us to appropriately have a space for teachers to sit together in the lunchroom. That doesn't exist currently. Parking spaces. If you've been to the South, I just had a tree come down and block my driveway and take out a bunch of parking spaces the other day, and that's only the third tree to come down in four years for me. So, we'll see how many more I get. But having appropriate spaces on the property and in the building as well.
So, these were the, what we consider the top 10 highlights of the educational plan, which as all of you know, is almost 80 pages in length. So, it's a very comprehensive document that took a while to write, and many voices were taken into consideration when we drafted the document. So, and I think the important takeaway from this is this is the blueprint for the future of elementary education in Stoughton, not just for a new building. And I think that's a really important takeaway from this document, and we're more than happy to answer any questions or field any comments. That's our presentation.
Yeah, thank you. I know we love to talk about the education plan, especially Lindsay, but does anybody have any questions or comments from the committee?
I have a comment on the education.
I'll let you go, Armando.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering if at this point, I know it's early in the process, but have you had an opportunity to talk with the next grade up when the kids graduate from South School, and they learn so much, they're going to learn so much from this new space, and it's so geared towards learning. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to talk with them, where they go from here, and they can take and continue to carry their learning forward as opposed to something that could get lost if they advance towards high school.
I mean, when we actually talked to our current 2nd grade classes, when we considered the design, and we took all of their input into consideration when thinking about what plans would make sense for them, and I think there's a great deal of enthusiasm with our younger students about the possibility of having a new building. And I think one thing that excites both Mr. Door and myself is the idea that when you have a newer facility, kids are excited to learn. And I think that excitement will transcend as they move up to the middle school and then to the high school. And I also think that the excitement in the community in terms of thinking ahead towards the opportunity with the middle school in the future, I think that this will, you know, start the momentum for everybody, students and the adults in the community as well.
Perfect.
Lindsay?
Yeah, I really appreciate that. I think especially when the focus is at the elementary level, that really helps us get ahead of learning gaps as we get further along in a student's education. So, we'll just like double-click on that. But I also just wanted to say, I think it's been a minute since I've really liked looked at this list, and I appreciate you bringing it back. I think. bringing it back. I think something that just struck me, that struck me before, but I want to emphasize again, is just how intentional and multifunctional so many of the parts of this building are. It's like everything in the learning commons, from the staircase that can be used as like an assembly space to the pipes that are in the building anyway, so like, let's use them as a learning opportunity. I think it just, it really speaks to the care and thoughtfulness that went into the planning to really maximize every square inch of this building. So, thank you for...
I think we really had some great thought partners, and not just the members of the building team, but also in the groups of the building team hired as well. I mean, both Vertex and DRA, like the people there, like, we still text with Courtney from DRA who gives us feedback on stuff that we're doing. And, you know, so I think that they've seen a lot of really cool things done in K-5 facilities, and we were able to kind of bring in some of those elements. And I think you get the best of what people have seen to be really successful. So I think that that's kind of a neat opportunity. I mean, we talk about, we truly, when we talk to the rest of the principals, we're excited about it because it's, there's a lot of cool things that could come out of having a facility that looks like this. Not, we don't think of it as fancy. We think of it as practical and functional for what our kids need right now.
Yeah, I think it's like, all that stuff is there, so why not treat it like a learning opportunity? Yeah, no, totally. Thank you.
Karen, any comments or questions?
Well, yes.
Like, I don't think you were here when we did our presentation before.
I may not have been. I may not. I am the newest until our new two come in. So first of all, I had no idea that there was no playground in South Stoughton. I'm actually shocked. I'm a townie. I've been here my whole life. So that's exciting to know that at least South Stoughton will get a playground down there. That's huge. And the playground looked amazing, I gotta say. And it's nice to have playgrounds that are specific to, there's a big difference between a kindergarten and a first-grade playground, because we see it at the Jones', and a fifth grader or a fourth grader who really want more of the basketball courts and sort of things. So that's super exciting for me. I am on the CPAC Committee. We recently had a little visit with both of you, looking at the quiet rooms over there. So you guys make do, you make do with what you've had, and it's been rough. It is rough. But you do what you can, and we really appreciate it because you are making it work. I don't know how you're doing it, but you're making it work as you can. So for the CPAC people and those that are coming up, because we are starting to identify children who have needs, high needs, through the Jones School coming up, even they start to go into kindergarten, first, second grade, when they start to realize that maybe they need some things put into place for them. So I'd like to have you just talk about, for the special needs students, who, you know, maybe not everybody agrees with their needs, but I am a proponent and an advocate for their needs. So if you could just mention how this will help them, how this is going to benefit them, and then how that ties into the community also, please. And then I have a couple more.
Yeah, we can both talk about this. When we wrote the education plan, we were considering the substantially separate classroom that is currently at the South Elementary School. So that is our language-based classroom right now. That's not to say that perhaps another specialized program might come in and take its place down the line, but when we wrote the ed plan, that was the program that we specifically focused on. But in addition to that, we also had a great deal of conversation and consideration given to the inclusion spaces that any student that receives special education services would be utilizing. And part of that is also thinking about the smaller spaces that perhaps related services would use, such as occupational therapy or speech pathology. And then we also included an entire space for the physical therapy that would be next to the gym space, which none of our elementary schools have right now. But we do have, as you've said, a population of kiddos who really do need these related services. And so we need to have, we're obligated to provide the spaces that are adequate for their needs. And we should be, right?
We're obligated.
Right, right. But I mean, it should just be something that we want to do, and we are doing that. So part of the plan was considering all of those different needs that our kids have as learners right now. Counseling spaces was another key component. We have students that need different kinds of counseling services, and we needed private spaces for those to happen. So there are many different opportunities within the building for different students and their needs. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there was a pretty significant requirement to really explore what we currently have and what we need as part of this process. So I think for us, that was a really good exercise in like, okay, well, we know what we are able to do with the spaces that we have, but what do we actually need if we were doing this in the best possible scenario, right? So I think it was giving everyone their own spaces from counseling and OT and really planning for the most that we could have, so that we have a little bit of room to grow, right? And not just plan for exactly the number that we have. I think having smaller spaces for some of the inclusion teachers, having breakout rooms in the hallway, having a lot of opportunities and a lot of spaces within the building where kids can really flourish, right? Because we see now, like, at the South, you might have to travel the entirety of the building to get to your service, and that takes time. I mean, this is the reality, you know, or the spaces, the clinic was a big piece, too. We went back and forth with the nursing department to figure out what was the appropriate types of things that they might need, and spaces, and number of beds, and private exit, so you could pick up kids that were sick and not bring them all the way through the building. So things like that were considered, and I think asking questions like that is a good opportunity to really pick our brain as to what we really had to go through as part of this was developed. And, you know, we spent a lot of time with Carl and Courtney, who did a lot of the blueprints, and they would ask us very specific questions, like, do you want this here? Like, does this make sense with the ed plan? And we'd be like, I don't know yet. Like, what makes sense with how you've done this before? And so I think there was some really good conversations. Ed Clark was part of this process on the backend, and prior to him, there was other support from the SED department. So, you know, I think we really were able to get, if we didn't know the answer, we were able to go to a person within the district who had their priorities and needs and get that information and incorporate that as well, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Just a couple more questions for me, just for you guys, and then one for Dr. Byetta, maybe one for Angie, too. I'd like to know, when did you start the planning for this? I mean, it wasn't like six months ago. We're talking...
Years ago.
Years ago.
Years ago, yeah.
Twenty-one?
So, yeah, so when I got hired, Mr. Ford signed my contract and said, by the way, you're going to start working on a new building this year. So that was pretty much the conversation, right?
Okay, so this has been years.
This has been at least four years of us doing this.
Okay, so this isn't like a fly-by-night, hey, we're going to just build this crazy...
I got a lot of documentation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So this has been in the works for a very, very long time, probably even before you.
Yep.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Well, I was...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's all right. Just give me one second. So then I'd like to know, how many hours do you think the two of you have put in? Well, a guesstimate. How many hours have you guys actually put in, invested into how exactly is the best, the best way to put this building together that is the best solution for students, the best solution for Stoughton, the most economical way? How many hours have you guys invested into this project?
Hundreds. I think that's probably really hard to quantify.
Each?
Yeah. I mean, plus, we've spent a lot of time together, too.
Yep.
It was great. I mean...
Okay. And just so everyone doesn't know, Ms. Monahan, you are the principal of the...
I'm the principal of the Wilkins.
Wilkins.
I'm the principal of the South.
Okay, so you guys aren't principal vice, separate principals?
Separate principals.
Four hundreds of hours.
A lot of collaboration, not during the school day.
Yeah, phone calls on the weekends, night meetings.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate so much all the work that the two of you have done for Stoughton, students trying to improve things for Stoughton. So it's a lot of work. Hopefully it's fruitful. Hopefully we get a lot out of it. Stoughton gets a lot out of it. So thank you both so much. Dr. Byetta, if I understand right, there is a certain out-of-district cost for special education students that we are not able to, maybe you can help me with the wording here, that we're not able to supply here in Stoughton, that we have to outsource to others. And I understand, like, the transportation is expensive. This is all like a huge expense. From what I understand, this new building might alleviate some of that cost, and it's not small, if I understand correctly. And if I can just stop you there for just a quick second, so I can finish up my kind of thing. If Angie could please give us her, after Dr. Byetta, your thoughts on someone who is now a senior who went through all of this, and what your thoughts are if you were an elementary student and you were about to go into a brand-new school. So let Dr. Byetta kind of do this, and then I'd love to hear your thoughts on it. Thank you.
So through Ms. Powers to the rest of the committee. So remembering that the process of an IEP and a student who needs student services is a federal contractual agreement between the school system and the family, legal guardian, parents. And so that discussion is usually grounded on the best interest of the student. So for us, it's about creating internal programs, of which we have over 130 students in district that we support, and then there's still another just shy of 50 students that go out of district. And again, agreement because either A, we don't have the resources, we don't have the space, or more importantly, the significant issue of the student, their need, is not one that we are trained to do. So then you work with either your collaborative, which is, you take, collaborative basically is a group of public schools that all have created that space, and we work off of our numbers to have that space. For us, it's North River and Plymouth Collaborative that we belong to, but students can go to others as well that we don't belong to. You play a little higher of a price differential. And then there's the private schools that you can go to, i.e. the league school as an example. So the prices for that, excluding transportation, is going to go on the low end of the high 50s, mid 60s for tuition. That would be 180 days, and that doesn't include any extra days, and you do get billed for those that we pay for.
As a school committee, as a school.
As a school department.
It's in our budget.
And then it can go to as high of a residential student, who may be as much as $300,000 a year, plus transportation, specialized or van, or even a specialized motor vehicle. And then there's added to that, there's the specialty costs that can go on top of that. So you could have a student that is going to a collaborative or a private school who needs a one-to-one nurse. That's on top of tuition. Or needs a one-to-one paraprofessional. That's on top of tuition, and so on, for those specialized service delivery models. So, and then added to that, there's a formula called CIRCA-BREAKER, where the first $45,000 or so, we automatically pay, and then we get up to 70% to 75% for the next fiscal year back on that student. So the only time that there's, if you will, a financial benefit is if the student moves out. But then there's also the negative, when we have a student after the budget season moves in, and we didn't budget for them, and where does that, those funds come from? So that's the process. So a new building allows for us to, A, continue to grow our programs, because it's going to help to alleviate some of our space issues that we have, number one. And number two, this particular building has looked at the RISE program, if I remember correctly, as being one of our specialized classrooms. That would be one of the schools that it would be a home base for. And so the school is actually being created or put together with, that every classroom, regardless if it's EL or special ed, is at the core of learning and not excluded to the side. It's in the core, which is one of the things that Stoughton does very, very well, is make sure that every building, everything that we build, is in the same hallway with any other student and not, quote, excluded from that area. But this building, because it's literally pods of learning, second grade on one side, right, first grade on the, or third grade on the other, allows for even more of that to happen. Now, in terms of saving money, yes, it could potentially do. Because the moment we grow our own programs, I can take, for example, let's say I need a paraprofessional and one teacher for six kids, eight kids. So that's a cost, and yes, there's a cost on the townsite potential healthcare. But when you add, let's say, a highly qualified $75,000 educator with a highly qualified $25,000, $30,000 paraprofessional, even with a cost of the townside of, let's say, another $20,000 to $30,000 in medical, or $40,000, you're at about $150,000. I just told you that one student is low end of 65, and as much as $300,000 depending. So you can see that if six kids are in a classroom at 65 plus tuition, plus transportation, that's a significant cost increase versus have an internal program.
And we could actually do that in-house now, if we have this.
We can enhance our programs and have more programs, because we're getting to that point where we just don't have the physical space.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Angie.
I'd love to hear your comments. Yeah, so I'm actually a South School alum. I've grown up on Ash Street, so I kind of can testify a lot. I remember in fourth grade, I was asked to, my class was asked to write letters to the senator, I think it was the senators or the selectmen, asking for a new school, and that was eight years ago. I'm in 12th grade now. So this has been an ongoing issue that I've known about my whole life, pretty much. And I've grown up in the building. There's been countless leaks, countless pipes that have froze, so suddenly we can't use the sink in the classroom. And this is like years and years and years ago. I'm 18 now. I left the South School when I was 11. So it's been going on for a while, and a lot of generations of kids have faced the challenges in the classroom that's out of their control, at the elementary school level, which is related to the building. So I think it'd be great if the kids can benefit from a new learning space. And now I'm in the high school with a new building, very, very similar to the plans here. We have like pods that are like the outside collaborative spaces you talk about. We have a learning commons. We have a cafeteria and a gym that's separate from the rest of the building with the classrooms, which is used really often for like community spaces. The wrestling team hosted, we've hosted three tournaments in the past two years. That's like a really huge deal. And it's really good for promoting wrestling and just, I guess, Stoughton Public Schools in general looks pretty good for the schools. But we can do that because of the new building we have. And I know at the elementary school level, they can definitely do similar things for more communities, or the Stoughton community and more organizations. So, yeah, I grew up at the South School, and I still live pretty close there. So, yeah, it's pretty obvious that there's a need for a new building. And I think the plans, which are really similar to Stoughton High School, I think it's important to note that, like, there's kids that have gone through the elementary schools that need help, and we're at the high school, and we see like huge differences, just in like how it feels to be in the building, where like, it's not, it's not dark, it's not like, lights, all the lights are on pretty much. There's no issues like that. Everything works at the high school for the most part. Like, there's no major issues. So there's a huge difference, and I'm sure little kids probably pick up on that even more than high schoolers do who are glued to their phones. So they're more involved in their surroundings, I suppose. So I think it's really important for the kids.
Thank you. I think there's no better testament to than a student, too. This is why we have a student representative, because it's really important to hear that perspective, and how much kids do you pick up on that. I want to thank you both for coming in and presenting. This is really important. I was at the doll fair, Mr. C. left, this past weekend talking to parents, and, you know, there was definitely excitement. I heard, that steam lab, I really want that steam lab. That's so exciting. I'm so excited about the possibilities for the rest of Stoughton, what this means for education in Stoughton. And so that's one of the reasons I invited you here, because I want parents to start talking about this, like the possibilities for all of our students, not just the ones who are going to this school. But it will, it should elevate elementary education across Stoughton. So I'm really excited about the possibilities. So thank you both for, again, all of your work, but thank you for presenting and reminding us of why we're here and why we're doing this. Anything else from any? All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to the Elementary School Building Committee update and responsibilities, which is very much related. The next building committee meeting has been moved from tomorrow to Wednesday, March 19th at 7:00 p.m. Will that be virtual or just our hybrid?
I think it's hybrid.
I think it's hybrid as well. But there will definitely be a virtual option for that. Dr. Byetta mentioned the letter from the MSBA. That is a very generous granting of the extension through April 30th, 2025, to secure the funding for the elementary school building project. And we had to ask for an extension to our extension because of the change in the vote election date. So the election is now April 8th. So they very generously gave us through the end of the month. Very much thank you to the MSBA. Cannot thank you again for all of your patience and your generosity. And thank you to the town manager, the select board chair, the building committee, everybody who's been working on the securing that extension.
Just wanted to add, I can confirm that that is a hybrid meeting.
Okay, thank you. So it's a hybrid meeting. And just a reminder, the town election is that Tuesday, April 8th. The ballot will include the question regarding the debt exclusion. It's not a tax override. So I keep saying, I keep seeing on social media, this is a tax override. It's not. It's a debt exclusion. They are different. Debt exclusions only apply for the life of the loan, which, you know, is a 30-year loan, I understand for a lot of people... I understand for a lot of people that that feels permanent. But it is different. It is for debt exclusion to fund the elementary school project. The Town Clerk's website has the information on voter registration, deadlines requesting a mail-in ballot, those of you who have college-age kids who are registered in Stoughton, and dates for early in-person voting. Those are all on the clerk. I think that's it for the update. There's, we are expecting to have another community forum. There's all sorts of other, all sorts of activities around town, possible question-and-answer sessions, possible presentations to places like the Council on Aging. I'm talking to a couple of groups as well to do presentations. So still opportunities, if you want to learn more, reach out, because we will be happy to present.
Yeah, I'll be at the Council on Aging on the, I believe it's the 27th of March at 1:30 to do a presentation. And we have a TV production this week of Q and A on Thursday. And we are attending through the Building Committee. So this would be literally informational, PTO meetings, there's fairs, and other public meetings that are taking place.
Yes. And I think there might be an opportunity for us to, if you would like to help out, I know Karen and I were at the fair, and we'll probably send her on to sign up for some of the events. So if you have time to join us, we'd really appreciate that. And again, you have other opportunities in town to hold signs, knock on doors, all of that. Moving on to modular classrooms, just a reminder, we're considering several scenarios. One is a few or more at one or more schools, just because we're out of space. We have two schools that are using libraries as classroom right now. And then the other option we're looking at is multiple modulators at up to five locations if the revote for the elementary school project fails on April 8th, because we will still have to close the South Elementary School. Remember, that's been designated for replacements since 2000. And it's too expensive to repair that. We'd have to relocate all those 300 students to the remaining four elementary schools in town. And a failed revote also does not address our preschool overcrowding issue. So we'd be looking at modulators for the Joneses. Dr. Byetta, do you have any information on?
Spot on.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of lay out the land so that it's very clear to people. Our options are the $65 million debt exclusion with the $47 million MSBA grant for a new consolidated elementary school building that essentially takes care of the South, the Wilkins, and the Joneses. There are some people who want to build just a new 300-student school without the help of the MSBA. We looked at the prices for that. It starts at $75 million for even a very rectangular school for just 300 students. Again, we have over 300 students at the South right now, so that building would be too small the day it opens. Add to that the cost to renovate the Wilkins to remain as an elementary school. That was estimated something like $54 million by the building project. And/or renovate the replacement, and renovate or replace the Joneses. That's another $16 to $25 million. That's so much more than building one consolidated school. If that revote fails, though, that, building three new schools is not an option. Our option is these modulators. That's over $22 million for modulators. That's an increase in the operational budget. The budget will just balloon to accommodate all the increases in transportation. And the Chair of the Select Board has said that they're currently looking at investigating how to fund the modulators within the budget, because in order to fund the modulators, we're looking at either another debt exclusion or funding within the budget. Funding within the budget means the school will likely bear a significant portion of the cost. We can't fall below our foundation budget. There are penalties for that. So we're looking at multiple years of being only able to fund a foundation budget. And just how devastating that would be long-term to the schools. That's significant slashing in programs, extracurriculars, sports, a lot of our alternative pathways to education, to graduation, those sorts of things. Losing so much of what makes Stoughton Public Schools special, marching band. You know, what makes Stoughton special? Those programs are going to be hurt by this. That means a significant reduction in staff, particularly in general education. That means larger class sizes, especially in upper elementary, all the way through secondary grades. And that means that we'll have difficulty adding new programs, special education, other options. So there are real hurts to doing these modulators. Not just the space and losing playgrounds, but there's real hurts for families across the district. So I want to stress this for families who say, my kid's out of elementary school. This isn't going to affect me. It will, because it will affect the class sizes, it will affect the program offerings at the middle school and the high school as well. And the townside, that's going to mean cuts as well. So the Town Manager has said in the past, that could include things like eliminating visiting nurses, privatizing trash, cutting hours and programs from departments like the library. So there are real costs to this. I know that the signs say no tax increase. Well, there's still a huge cost. What are you willing to lose? Are you willing to lose your home value? And a lot of what makes Stoughton special in terms of its schools and its services? Or are you willing to keep those services and actually propel us to the future? We were just talking about all the future opportunities of this new consolidated building. So that's my soapbox for the meeting.
One second.
Anyway, just wanted to lay that. If there's nothing else on modulators, redistricting all K-5 elementary school updates, just a reminder, as I do every meeting, redistricting means redrawing the boundary lines for who goes to which elementary school. We're redistricting regardless of the final decision for the South School building due to increased enrollment across the town, and this will affect all elementary schools. Redistricting Committee update, our last meeting was February 13th. We discussed modulators, which I think we've done enough now. We've had Dr. Byetta's presentation actually to us as well, is very similar. We also looked at that heat map, which is that population density map that the Building Committee's feasibility study had and discussed that. We noted with the new elementary school, the Wilkins Committee community is going to be the most affected, because that school will close. But with modulators, every school is going to be really affected, because we're going to have no school in the south side of town and having to redistrict all that. So we reviewed those. And the next committee meeting for the Redistricting Committee is this Thursday, March 13th at 6:00 p.m. It is all virtual. And we're going to be looking at enrollment trends in the South School District, where people live, since we have a number of students who are still very much in that district. Anything else on the Redistricting Committee?
Done.
All right. Transportation update. Before I begin the transportation update, I'm just going to note that I filed a disclosure by school committee member or charter school trustee of a financial interest in the general school fee as required by 930 CMR 6.09, because we're discussing transportation fees that could affect me, because my children ride the bus. And with that, moving on to transportation bid, and I'll hand it over to Dr. Byetta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you also for your constant ethics and your statement earlier and regarding your connection here. Appreciate that very much. To your far left is the actual bid that went out on February 18th. I did not copy it for all of you, because there would be at least three trees over by the South School, I guess. And we had a bid opening on March 4th. There were nine companies that requested the bid documents. First Student was the only company that submitted a bid. They are our current provider. They have, literally have the bid at three years for a total amount for the three years of $4,361,801.37. That is a 14% increase over the three years. We are, it's a significant number, but we are very lucky. Because as you know, we're seeing bids that are double digits for one year. This bid does include our secondary runs. And this bid is, does allow for us for a two-tier price option. That's always something that we're, you know, able to do. Not included in the price, but that's something that you can negotiate later. This bid for the current year is $34,000 over what we budgeted. So we are already looking for $34,000 more than we budgeted in the FY '26 budget. Okay? So as the only bid, and being timely, it's the recommendation of the administration that you agree to the bid and sign a three-year contract with First Student. Added to that, I'd like to publicly thank LeAnn Kerman, who's really been doing an omen's work, with support from Heidi, of course, in getting all of this done. The pressure point has been on her, and I want to publicly acknowledge her for all of the work that she's, extra work above and beyond that she is doing to get this stuff done. Because she then becomes, if you agree tonight, she becomes the person who begins our process for registration and getting the communication out, and so on and so forth.
All right. Questions, comments for the superintendent?
Karen.
Go on.
Sorry, Dr. Byetta, can you just elaborate a little bit on the impact on the FY '26 budget and how we're thinking about how we're planning for that?
Yeah, so what we will have to do is, so we basically took our best estimate on the one-time increase, if you will. And now that increase for the fiscal year that we put in is short $34,000. So as our budget gets closer to fruition and passage at town meeting and so on and so forth, we know we have right away a $34,000 issue that we have to address. Now, that could be done in so many different ways, as we know. But that also, this also goes off the concept that you have agreed on fees, right? So that's already in here. So if we don't do the fees, and it's a six-figure number that we're off by. Does that make sense? Okay? So we took that inference, because we built the budget that way, as you know. But based on what I'm hearing and Heidi's hearing, in the field, 14% over three years is a lot. But at the end of the day, it's about a half a million dollars over three years. But for the utilization of transportation and the busing that we have, it's a pretty solid deal, I guess.
Karen.
I have two questions. One is, I believe there was a previous meeting where we talked about not having a number of companies to look through. Is that, is that still, did we look at multiple companies? Or was there really only one servicing our area?
So we put out the bid publicly, like we're required to, for two weeks. And nine companies picked up the information. So legally, we can't go out there and promote any, market or do any of that. We just bid it, and then the vendor decides to take the bid and then decides if they're going to put it in. So of those nine, only one bid on it, and that's your current company. No other company put in a bid for a three-year contract.
Interesting. No one wanted it, except for one out of nine.
And nine phone calls, nine requests is a lot. That's more than we've seen. And we thought for sure, I won't get into details of the company, but we thought for sure that there was a lot of questions coming. So we thought for sure that, which are all shared with everybody, by the way, that is in the, has taken a bid. So, but we.
It sounds like we did a good job with it, though.
It's the best we can do. There's a lot of frustration around transportation bids throughout the Commonwealth. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
But we're very happy to get it within a reasonable three-year contract.
We are all very happy for buses. Yay for buses. We did have an issue with a bus last year. Are we going to have an issue again this year with a bus? Because I know a lot of parents and families were upset about a lack of a bus.
Sure, that could happen, absolutely. That's why, that's why the process for this year, we're going to attempt to make sure that the format includes an electronic stamp noting that somebody is applying and has completed the application. Because there were numerous pieces of misinformation around meeting deadlines, of which we can search and see the stamp, that somebody opened up an email, somebody started an application, but somebody never completed an application and didn't meet the deadline. And that was, unfortunately, Ms. Kerman had to listen to that. Transportation is important to families, we understand that. But at the end of the day, there's only so much that we can do. I'm sure there's plenty of people who would say, you know, cut somewhere else, cut a teacher, cut an administrator, cut a custodian, cut something to get another bus. And we're just at the point right now that that's not something that we can do. We also think that returning to fees will alleviate some of that.
Okay. And can you just remind the public what the fees are and when paperwork registrations are due, please? Thank you.
That's part of that. If there's no objection, can we just, sorry. If there's no objection, can we just take up transportation all in total? Is everybody okay with that? Because it just kind of is all going to bleed together, as you just pointed out. Okay.
Yeah, so we have a recommendation going back to February 11th that I'm going to stick with, which is that we're recommending $375 per student with a family cap of $750. So if you have a third child, your child would go. But remember that free and reduced lunch are still getting, by federal law, they're still getting transportation at no cost. So they'll have to go through that process. We currently have not published specific start date and end date. But we would start as soon as we're ready, probably within a couple of weeks, get the information out and try to close it. I believe traditionally, we try to close it by a certain due date. I believe in the past, we've used the last day of school, if I remember correctly. So that'll be, we'll give people as much time as we can. But we will have that drop-dead date. You bet.
Are there other questions?
Only one question, because as she mentioned, the bus issue. And I read through the guide here. One of the things I thought of, which didn't seem to come out in the guide, is that because Stoughton is growing population-wise, what happens after the deadline? Couple of families move into town because of a new building or something?
Yeah, so we always leave somewhere in the vicinity of three to five seats within new registrations that would meet the potential of required free transportation. We did it this past year. And then the second part that we will always continue to look at is, you know, do we end up with a secondary list and at some point, do we alleviate that? Our biggest issue was we were free, and so everybody's utilizing it, so that's one. But really, it becomes that secondary issue. And I can say this as a former principal. We know that activities and athletics at a secondary level become something that a student may not take that bus during wrestling season at all, except in the morning. And then not in the afternoon, and the seats are open. And we can't give up that seat. That seat belongs to a student. So that's part of the, part of the issue is the constant in and out of the number of students that are participating in activities and so on. It's more of a secondary issue than it is in elementary. But we do leave seats available throughout the year. We just have to, because if somebody moves in and they're within the K-6 free zone, I've got to give them, I've got to give them a seat. And that's hard.
One more question. Within the contract, does it have provisions that, because the fees are coming back into place, should parents decide to drive their kids to school? We have open seats? And it most likely not. But the contract provision allows us to drop a bus or the cost of a bus?
Always, you can always drop a bus or add a bus.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, and that's just common practice, if you will.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Lindsay, did you have anything?
I just wanted to, I don't know if you or Jonathan could better explain this, but just, there was some confusion last year about that two-mile required distance for K-6. Can you kind of explain, like, who qualifies for that? How it's calculated? How that factors into fees and that sort of thing? Because full disclosure, my kids fall into that zone. But I think it's helpful for people to understand, because I remember hearing from parents, my kid is in 11th grade and lives more than two miles from school.
It's Mass. General Laws, Chapter 71. That's clear, and it's in your packet. It's Mass. General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 68, which specifically notes K-6 at, lives more than two miles from the school. So if you're an 11th grader, that's, that doesn't fit the K-6 model. And this is, and not an issue that's just Stoughton. This is a constant issue that comes up. That's why you hear things about, should, you know, should plans be about who, is it first come, first served, or is it who lives the furthest away? And we utilize a first come, first-off model. We also have a more generous policy when it comes to elementary students living more than .25 miles away from their school. And secondary is .5 miles away from the school that can become eligible for transportation. So it's all a matter of, you know, which part of all of this do we accept and which part do we reject, because you can't do it all. And there is no good answer, believe me, because the months of October, September and October are where we get the most questions. What we're hoping to do, which will take a lot of effort, but what we're hoping to do is at some point gets, you know, get that message out that says, so you are choosing not to do this, right? Yes or no? That's really the next thing, and it's really, you know, that's just all hands on deck, trying to say, okay, we're getting close to the deadline, haven't seen you.[1759.54] trying to say, okay, we're getting close to the deadline, haven't seen you, you know, so we're going to take it for granted. Then when the deadline comes, if we haven't seen you that year, definitely a no. And because we can't play individual admin and assistant to families, they have to take the initiative to do that, and I want to make sure it's very public. You have to do it every year. It's not you do it once and it's caught, you're there. No, you have to do it every single year, because rules change and so on and so forth.
All right. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a couple of things related to this transportation guideline, but I can probably do that offline, just some questions I have.
Sure. Gentlemen to your left will be very helpful.
Yes. All right. So we have three things to vote on, if I'm correct.
Transportation.
Transportation bid, the transportation fees, and then the transportation handbook. Is that correct? Okay. All right, so let's start with the transportation bid. And so that would be a vote to approve it. So at this point, need a motion, and then we can have discussion on the, and questions on the table.
I will move that we approve the transportation bid that is a three-year contract for, what, FY '26 to FY '28?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So Lindsay made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second, by Armando. And then I'll open up, sorry, seconded by Armando. I'll open up for any other questions or debate. Are we ready to vote? Everybody feel comfortable?
I just want to confirm the superintendent's recommendation is that we approve this bid and move forward with it.
It's never a happy bid to do, but yes, please.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so following the superintendent's recommendation. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's a four to zero. I guess I need to sign that.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't let me leave without doing that. The next is the transportation fees. I have stuff all over the place here. So again, those transportation fees are $375 per student and a $750 cap for that. And the idea is that this is going to offset some of this. Unfortunately, it's not going to offset all of the bus costs and add all these extra costs and buses, but those who are eligible for free and reduced lunch are still eligible for that discount. So questions or comments on fees?
I just want to share, I, it took me a little bit to come around to this for this year. It just, it doesn't feel great to bring fees back for families, and also knowing the really significant increase in demand we've had for bus services and the financial challenges and the limitation with supply. Like, it just, I think this does make sense, and the things that made me feel more comfortable with it were the cap on the family maximum and also the fact that there are provisions for students who are on free and reduced lunch. So I think it doesn't feel great, and I think it's also the right thing to do, given all of the context and knowing that we have accommodations here for families, and also that we are trying to do this in March, well ahead of the new school year, so that folks have time to plan. So that's what I will say there.
Yeah, I agree. This was a hard decision, because I was there when we were able to make transportation fee free and really hoped that we'd be able to continue that, but knowing our constraints, I really don't see any other options. I really do appreciate the family cap, because I know that I had, I had listened to a number of families say, I wish we had been able to afford the bus, but with three kids, I couldn't, I couldn't swing the fee. One of my friends used to joke, she said, for that, for what I would pay for three or four kids, I want the bus to personally come up to my house and like, come knock on the door and bring them out. And I was like, fair. But I think this is a fair family cap.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so do I have a motion to, what is it, to approve?
Correct.
Okay.
I move that we approve the recommended fees for buses, beginning with the '25-'26 school year of $375 per student with a $750 family cap.
All right, that motion is made by Lindsay. Do I have a second?
Second.
No one really wanted to be second. All right, that was seconded by Armando. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's carried for zero. And then moving on to the handbook itself. Armando, did any of the questions you have, would that factor into kind of our approval of this? Were they more just kind of general, like, what do questions mean, what do things mean? Or do you have, like, recommendations?
Probably one recommendation. Around number eight, paragraph number eight, under emergency weather condition, it states in here that, that the children walking when the sidewalks are free will all be picked up, which the next number nine pretty much states the capacity, so all of them can't be picked up, and we need to reconcile the two.
So I have utilized this in the past as a superintendent. It's been in a severe weather situation where all of a sudden, the storm took a turn, and instead of allowing for walkers to walk home, it is that one-time incident where the safety concern of putting a student on the bus overwhelms or takes precedence over the number of people on the bus. So students would be literally standing up or squished to seats, but that's safer than, quote, "allowing for X students to walk." I've actually utilized that once in my career. It's not an easy decision to make. It's sometimes a little easier on the other side, on the way to school. I've been lucky enough that I haven't had to do that one. That one actually sometimes can be a little easier because of situations where parents might say, well, you can take the bus in the afternoon today, I'm not going to pick you up, and you actually had a seat on the bus. But yeah, I have used that one, and so it, it's never done, but it's only done if the superintendent feels that's in the best interest of the safety of the walkers. And it's a very difficult call to make.
And one of my concerns is that with saying all, and even if you squeeze all the kids like in a can of sardine, and then there's still more kids, do we send the bus back?
Yeah, so what we've done in the, what I've done in the past, perfectly, that's a great question, is we've actually had to do double runs, emergency double runs that day. We've made a determination that, and part of it is because some of these stops are new stops. The bus driver is like, we're trying to figure out, you're going to the south side of Stoughton, and you're going to the furthest part, because you're not used to going all the way down there. And then we may even call parents and say, well, we're going to make it as close to your house as possible, so it's going to be at the blah-blah corner, so meet your kid there, you know, that type of stuff. And kids didn't get home until seven o'clock at night. I've had that happen. But it's all about the safety, right? It's just, and everybody attacks you for it, for the record. It's never the right decision, but you just do it in the best interest that you can.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, aren't any other questions or comments?
On the handbook?
On the handbook?
Yes, on the handbook. Sorry.
I do have one. I just want to share, I think at the last meeting where we discussed the transportation handbook, I had made a couple of comments about looking to move away from a first-come, first-served model and see if we could do something with distance instead. I shared that feedback with Mr. Ford, and your response made a lot of sense to me, so I just wanted to share it, which is that with the fee-based system being implemented this year, we're likely to see some of that issue be addressed through that, and then we can also, like, evaluate the impact of the fees on ridership and demand before making any changes to the assignment system. And I just thought that made sense, wanted to close the circle on that. So thank you for responding to that, Mr. Ford. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Yes.
One more thing, now that we know there are going to be fees, I was wondering, what's the timetable of letting the parents know? Not related to the deadline or anything, but perhaps let them know within a week or-
Yeah, we're going to make it, we're going to make what I would call an announcement, that there are now transportation fees, and these are the rules, and then there'll be a start date and an end date. We'll do it in two different pieces. And then we're going to constantly, through the newsletter, social media, constant, we're also trying to, Mr. Ford is working with the technology department to see how we can get this stamped in a way where people are like, you know, I got a receipt, you know? So now our side knows you got a receipt, your side knows you got a receipt. And we believe we can do that electronically, if I remember correctly.
That's my understanding, we can do it.
I think that would be really helpful, because that was one of the big feedbacks that I heard from parents last year, was I've sent in the application, but I didn't know until August whether or not we had the bus, and knowing that they've applied, and having some update in June or July after the closure, and just say, bus applications are now closed, you will find out, or, you know, we have enough buses for everyone, so you will find out the exact bus route in August. I think that would be really helpful, because that was the other big question, feedback I got.
And I'll send you, I'll send the committee a memo of an update of the process, once we finalize it, so that you have it and can share it with the public, and of course, we'll share it with everybody as well.
All right, thank you. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the transportation handbook?
So moved.
All right, so that was made by Lindsay. A second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Karen. Karen, did you work on this, I think, with the?
I did.
Oh, thank you to the policy working group for working on this with Mr. Ford.
I submitted the guidelines, I think, maybe with my other, but we did work on that.
Thank you for the work on that. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, four to zero. All right, moving right along. The next is the superintendent evaluation process. Just a reminder, we're in the summative evaluation phase. This is one of our major obligations as a school committee, is the evaluation of the superintendent. We have a number of steps that need to be completed. This is kind of an awkward timeline, because we have two members cycling off and two members cycling on during this, but we are hoping to get the process kind of going and get the conversation started, so that everyone is on the same page as we move through this. The superintendent is, has provided us with his end-of-cycle report, and this is his self-assessment along, and he's going, he's been providing us all along with evidence to support what he's done to achieve the goals, or likely is more to come. And so that's going to be a big part of this. We are going to have an evaluation form with these agreed-upon goals that clearly show what the goals were, the indicators were. There'll be a copy of the rubric that we used to do that. We will need to discuss how we're going to compile evaluations, whether we make a composite evaluation, or whether the chair makes the composite evaluation, whether it's a subcommittee, who's going to do that, or are the committee going to do it together in a public meeting, how the ratings are going to be determined, and all of that. And then each member's going to consider Dr. Baita's report and the evidence, as well as their own observations, and have a chance to ask clarifying questions and create individual evaluations, which will then be compositive into a final evaluation to be presented, discussed, and voted by the full committee. So this is a public process in Massachusetts, held in the open session of school committee meetings, and everything becomes a public document, so just keep that in mind. So we're getting the process started, knowing that Lindsay and I are cycling off, we have homework. We're going to be providing our part of this information and, you know, supporting the rest of the committee as they prepare to move on, but there's still going to be more to be done, because there's still more in the school year, and there's still things that Dr. Baita needs to complete. So then the new committee members will be part of the process as it's, as it is kind of continued on. And Dr. Baita, I don't know if you want to add some more?
No, I appreciate that the members that are leaving the committee are willing to take some time and give us some, the general information, and then the remainder of the committee will put together a timeline of more information for you to get, or updates to this, and then choosing within the committee who writes it. There's numerous different ways to do it. There's, you write it, you're on your own, you send it to the chair, the chair compiles it, there's the subcommittee and all of that. Typically, the process also includes some type of a one-to-one meeting with me, reflecting on what's being done, and then the committee makes it, makes the whole thing, literally it's public. It's the only person who's publicly evaluated. Great regulation. Fully endorse it. And, and then the consensus is typically either, A, we're moving to new goals, or we're going to continue to work on goals that haven't yet been fulfilled according to either the superintendent's request to add it, or even the school committee. That's how it works.
Any questions on the process at this point?
So when we were at the conference in November, I actually went to a session on this, so wanted to share some things I learned there. I don't, were you in that one?
I don't think so.
Okay. I forget, it was two districts, it was Lexington, I do not remember the second one, but they were talking about their processes for superintendent evaluation, and it's, you know, every member does their own evaluation based on the evidence provided, provides a rating, and then sends it to the chair, and it's the chair's job to cross-reference and sort of average out numbers and look for common threads and create like a consolidated evaluation. So I think, also just thinking about the fact that we're up April, first week of, second week of April, and there's still several months left of the school year after that, I think, to just underline your point, I think it makes sense to be able to provide our feedback from working with you for the last two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and put that together, and then the next chair could probably put it all together to do that, as, along with, you guys just get an extension on the assignment, I think.
Yeah.
Lucky you.
Yes, I know, yeah, we have to cram it all.
But does that, does that sound okay? I thought the, the way they presented it at the conference, I thought, made a lot of sense, and seemed like a process we could use.
Yeah, it's kind of an interesting process, because everyone individually does it, but then the committee as one provides an evaluation for the superintendent, so everybody gets to do their own grading and feedback, and then it's compiled, and that becomes like one voice. So we have five become one for this, but yes. Armando, question?
No.
Okay, Karen?
No, this sounds a lot like Chris.
Who happens to not be here, I noticed.
That was well said.
All right. Well, we are going to revisit this. Lindsay and I have some work to do and kind of working for this, and we'll make sure to touch base with Chris, so that she's aware this isn't on the horizon, whether or not she is the one who puts it together. Just moving on very quickly, FY '26 budget and town meeting articles, municipal operations met last night, Monday, March 10th, passed all three articles. We meet with a finance committee meeting, a finance committee tomorrow, that's Wednesday, March 12th at 7:00 PM. That's not here, that's in the Great Hall at Town Hall to present our budget and our articles. And we've announced a series of office hours for people from finance committee, town meeting, families, employees, residents, to come ask questions and provide feedback about the budget. I know, I hate reading this, but I just wanted, those who haven't seen the memo, those dates are Saturday, the 15th, from 10:00 to 11:30 at the central office at 31 Pierce Street. Tuesday, the 18th, from 2:00 to 3:00 at the central office. Wednesday, the 19th, 5:00 to 6:00 at the central office. Saturday, the 22nd, from 9:00 to 10:00, that will be a virtual meeting. The 24th is a Monday, that will be 4:00 to 5:00 at the central office, and then 26th, a Wednesday, from 6:00 to 7:00 will be a virtual meeting. And we'll probably pass around a sign-up sheet, see if people can help, can join. I know there are a couple of dates when I can join for at least half an hour. We might tack on some building project office hours as well, so, but those are the opportunities for people.
And we'll come out with a, we should come out probably in the next week to 10 days with April dates.
Yes.
Recognizing that April vacation is in there, and there's probably no meetings taking place that week, so.
All right, moving on to policy. We, policy working group has provided us with four policies. This is the informational sessions, informational part, and they will be up on the agenda for discussion and possibly voting at the next meeting. Karen, is there anything you want to introduce?
Not really for discussion, just for informational, but just so that I'll give like a little bit of them. I believe IE was for removal. So IE was, is now outdated, says things like, we're going to call elementary students, primary students, and secondary students, and it was pretty outdated.
Well, what we're also seeing with MASC and their policy service, is they're moving to eliminate a lot of standard policies that are really unnecessary, to try to keep the policy manual-focused on what would be something with the school community's interpretation of law or implementation law, as opposed to something that's just set in regulations. So, so that policy, for example, is something they believe is redundant, unnecessary, so they make a recommendation to remove it.
One of the question I have for you guys, is that some of the, it was interesting reading about people taking squirrels or raccoons.
No, I'll, I'll talk about that one. This was just for IE.
Oh.
Yeah, this was just for the organization of instruction for now. Yeah, so the next two were actually one policy. It was IMG, animals in schools, and it talked about squirrels and raccoons and whatever else, and you can't have them in the schools.
I was just going to suggest, for that particular policy, maybe someone in the medical community, a nurse can take a look at that policy as it relates to allergies and so on. I didn't see anything that worried me, but-
This discussion should really be next session?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's just informational, I'm just kind of giving a quick overview of them, and then it's up for discussion and possibly vote at the next, at the next meeting. So IMG and IMA, so IMG-A used to be part of IMG, and what they did was they separated it. They said, okay, now we're going to do one, animals in school, and then the other one's going to be service animals. So they just kind of took and they separated it, and there were some language changes, And there were some things that were just moved around, but not a whole lot of, of change, just more of separation. And then IMA was teaching activities. There was actually no change to this. They suggested having us remove this from the policies. We just kind of liked it. So we decided, you know, we wanted to keep it in there and it would just go in as a reviewed policy if we wanted to keep that. We can discuss more next meeting.
And did you want to note what your intent was so with bringing up a policy for review, but not making an adjustment?
Not sure what you mean. So we, yeah, go on.
So in terms of, because there's a whole process that takes place where we don't necessarily bring things to you, but we review policies. And with this particular working group, what they like to have is, is that date noted within the policy. But to make the change to the policy, it actually has to go through the process even to include that date. So what, what you're going to be seeing now, which we haven't done in the past, is if we do in fact review a policy, we will bring it forward as an unaltered policy, which could potentially be altered by the committee during the discussion component. But putting in that date so people know it wasn't just a policy that's been sitting around for 20 years and hasn't been touched or reviewed or anything else. So that full process is then reflected in that, the school committee's policy manual.
Sounds good. All right, thank you very much. So we will discuss those next time, possible votes. We'll discuss those next time, possible votes. Forgot my mic. So moving on to, the next is acceptance of minutes. We have two minutes, April, excuse me, February 11th. Let's start with those. Do I have, unfortunately, Chris is not here to provide us with all of our good edits. Do we have any amendments suggested for the February 11th minutes?
I have a very small one, which is on page three, under 6A Superintendent Succession Plan. And I'm trying to, this is probably actually accurate to how I was speaking at the time. But we talked about the internal candidate. And the motion was to invite the internal candidate. And her name's actually never used, so I just wanted to specify that the internal candidate, comma, Ms. Juliet Miller, Stoughton High School principal, so that that's clear in the minutes. Because it was clear at the meeting, so I just want to make sure that's reflected here.
Does anybody else have an edit? I do have one if nobody else does. Page four, under C, fourth sentence. It says, this plan does not include turning the Wilkins into a preschool and a module will be need to be considered for this building too. It was, it's clear if you're in the meeting that this building means the Jones. But I, for those who are not in the meeting in this building, I don't think they, they get that. So I would just amend that to the Jones building too. Just for those who are not reading this in the Jones building. All right, if there's no other amendments, do I have a motion to approve the February 11th, 2025 minutes as amended?
So moved.
All right, that motion was made by Lindsay, a second?
Your mic is audio on.
Second.
Seconded by Armando, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's carried for zero. And then February 25th, 2025 minutes, any amendments there?
None for me.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the February 25th, 2025 minutes as is?
So made.
All right, that was made by Lindsay, second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Armando, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's carried for zero. And moving on to the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee Expansion Proposal. Select Board Member Debra Roberts invited me to attend the last SEOC meeting. Thanks you very much to the SEOC for having me and for allowing me to present some of our questions and concerns and answering those. They assured me that they are intending to strictly serve in an advisory role, that they see themselves as a think tank rather than a watchdog. They also said that they do not expect to have expenses in the first year, hence the zero estimated cost. And then the select board chair said that because it's a town-based committee, they do incur expenses that aren't covered by grants and so on, that would fall under the town budget. So they do not expect to come to us specifically for funding things like a speaker or somebody for their training. So those were some of the questions they answered for me. And then they revised the draft, the proposed bylaws. They noted that they had drafted the bylaws kind of as a placeholder in the warrant, but are willing to amend that and put in something if there's, if we would feel more comfortable with that. Some of the main changes are under the duties section. They really consolidated that and sort of changed it as a little more open-ended. They did keep kind of the last three duties the same as before. And then they also adopted some slightly more inclusive language, eliminated some phrases that were very limiting in terms of who was allowed to be on, or who was expected to be on the committee or what their expectations were. So I bring to you this amended bylaws for discussion, for further questions, further comments. So that's my update on this. Armando, Lindsay?
Yeah, no, I would just say I appreciate you making that connection point and sharing the feedback. And I appreciate the responsiveness here. I think this makes a lot of sense. I know my colleagues had raised some, some flags or areas of feedback. And it looks like the duties list is condensed, which I think just allows for a crisper focus on the mission. I think the, the bullet points they kept the same makes sense to me because those are sort of procedural, like deliverable-based. So that makes sense to me. Yeah, no, I just, I appreciate the conversation responsiveness on this.
Thank you. I know, I don't know if you have had a chance to look at it, Karen. I know you had a lot of concerns about the previous ones and.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at this at all. Was this in our pack?
Should have been. It was tucked way in the back, so.
Yeah, I have not had a chance to take a look at this.
All right, so.
It looks like membership though is the same.
Membership is still the same. I think from what I'm understanding, because this is a town-formed committee and then the town does pay their, their, whatever money they would need. I think that's part of the reason for the, the fact that the select board does have one more member and has the ability to appoint other members on there. So I did not get a clear answer on the balance of that. But from what I heard, the subtext I heard was that was one possible explanation. But I did not get a clear answer on that. I know that's kind of a, a no-go for you, having five select board members and four school committee members. So I can, I can ask for further clarification. I know this is still open for feedback and I can still provide that. So this is still, this is moving forward at town meeting. I think the intent is that we have some comfort with this if this were to be voted at, selectively at town meeting. I think some of the changes will hopefully make it more possible for that to happen, given that, some of the, the comments that they received from, when they first presented it. So, so I'm still soliciting feedback on that and I will take that back to Debra Roberts. I guess if I could have feedback by Friday, and I'll get back to her by then. And I will reach out to Chris as well because I know that she had a number of, of things that she wanted answered and feedback, so. All right, moving on, I want to think the, so Debra's still also looking for a school committee meeting to present that. And again, we haven't yet picked someone, but I think we're not yet comfortable with this, so. Well, for that. Correspondents, thank you to the South School for having us for the Leaders or Readers Day last week. And anything else? All right. Nope. All right, our next regular school committee meeting is not until March 25th. That's Tuesday at 7:00 PM in the conference room. Yes? Oh, oh, yes.
I wanted to make a motion that we go back into executive session.
Okay.
And should I do that now or should I do that after you say what you're going to say? Sorry, I just.
I'm just going to announce our next regular meeting and then we'll go into that. So our next regular meeting, just for those who are watching at home, is Tuesday, March 25th at 7:00 PM in the conference room at district offices at 31 Pierce Street in Stoughton. And we have our joint meeting tomorrow with the finance committee, March 13th at 7:00 PM at Town Hall now.
Okay, sorry, jumped the gun there. I would like to make a motion that we re-enter executive session and then adjourn from there without returning back into open session just to wrap up discussion on our agenda there.
Sorry, second.
So the motion was made by Lindsay and it was seconded by Karen. What is the time?
8:49.
8:49. All right, so at 8:49 PM, we are re-entering exec. Oh, we have to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, four zero. We're entering back into executive session. All right.